I put for especially. Thank you. And I think a couple of things I actually want to. Hello, there it is. I just wanted to do a couple of quick announcements. First. Thank you. Uh, street fair begins this Friday five, five thirty. Downtown and we've got Kyle Hollingsworth Band Soul Rock. Yes. That in five thirty. Um, and then once again, my. If you have not signed up for Edward Bridge, please do. Bottom page. Whoops. Uh, at the bottom of the page, that's the link. Okay, so.
Tim did knock this thing over.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is that?
I saw it.
That's not. That looks like more of the. Yeah.
There were a lot of cables that were involved.
I can't blame you on that one. The aisle doesn't work, I'll take over. The overhead projector has not been installed.
All right, August.
We still connected him to.
Exactly.
Meredith.
He eats your down.
Um, all right, so first off, and our only agenda item is discussion direction. That's twenty twenty five City Council. Work. So I'm not sure which of you would stand by. It's gonna be a tactic.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff Durbin, City Manager, San Francisco Fox, Deputy City Manager, we're gonna tag team this presentation. Uh, what we're here for, sunny discussion direction to kick off twenty twenty five Council work. And to learn about technology. Uh, sorry for the technical challenges. Purpose and expectations are. For tonight, I'm pretty straightforward. Uh, as I noted, it's begin in twenty twenty five Council work plan process. Um, we're hoping through this process this year, we can link the various great plans and documents and the different things we have in place already together. To help council staff. And just like prior years, we did some homework. Our agenda tonight. Um, basically four sections of the presentation. Uh, we're gonna walk through our current work plan framework. Uh, we're gonna talk about some subtle refinements that. And then how we're going to propose to approach twenty twenty five Council work plan and then next steps. And we were planning on doing fifty fifty. Tammy and I, I may end up doing more because she's getting crushed by allergies, so her voice is a little obtuse. So the slides that you when they cover, I'll do my best. Uh, all right, our current framework. Uh, current framework connects the work plan items to program areas. You know, remember that basically the spreadsheet that talks about different items. Uh, talks into different priority, medium, low priority. Uh, then connects a work plan item to a program. As in one of the program areas from our budget. And. Um, I thought I was gonna talk about the budget now, but I'm gonna talk instead about the importance of core services. When we talk about council work plans. A lot of times councils don't necessarily think about the importance of core services. We'll talk some more about this. But these are the kinds of things that we just can't screw up. We have to make sure that we do these things right. We can't afford to have contaminants in our water. Can't afford to have contaminant flow out of our wastewater treatment plants. Can't afford to have police officers that aren't well trained. Have the right safety equipment. Council meetings and packets, gotta get those out on time, thorough with those type of things. So I could go on and on about it, but open record is these are core services, these are the types of things that occupy probably most of your staff's time. And just wanna make sure as we think about council work plan, that you also think about was the importance of those core services.
I'm gonna make an attempt, if you can't hear me, please let me know, and if my voice peeks out, just gonna take the first word of it. But in preparation for this, we wanted to give you all a feel for not only what's on council's work plans, but what department work plans right now. And what we have, these are special projects that are above and beyond the daily work of the city. So if we look at what we're doing in twenty twenty four, council departments have slated us to do three hundred and twenty two projects. Thirty five of these are currently on the work plan. The majority of them are on department work plans, and some of them are things that just come up. The nature of municipal work is there might be community demands or something, and like even legislation that mandates us to do something, we might have a retirement. So if you're gonna go through these projects by your programs in the budget, and if that kind of explanation of these programs are already.
It's just a refresher, your budget is broken into two budgets, budgets essentially. You have the account. Format, all the different lines. Then program based budget. So the program based budget, these are program areas. Established, I don't know, ten years ago, something like that. Seven years, seven years ago, maybe maybe a little longer. Okay. Some time ago, when we've been using these, uh, we're not proposing any changes, we just wanna run through, show you. Uh, how, uh, work plan is gonna evolve.
You feel for the current work of the city, so one of our program areas is transportation. We'll see a pie chart on each of these and just breaks out the percentage of the projects that are on council work plan, the dark crane, the department work plan, lighter green, or other things that we prompted this year, that's that. Types of projects in transportation are future forty two. We should underpass its body, it's the initiatives, we have a lot of traffic calming initiatives in the city that are also part of this, as well as a number of studies. We're part of a number of regional studies right now, with the South Boulder Road and RTDP service. Like you already see Jeff gearing up. So transportation will include all of those transportation life projects. Right now, this is the twenty twenty four work plans of projects that are happening.
Yeah, and we're not, these aren't any moveson. We're trying to give you a flavor. Types of things that are in these different program areas. Yeah, my, my throat hurts listening to you, so. Yeah, let me know if you're good to jump back in, but another second programming area is utilities. Uh, these. These are things like water, sewer, storm, we do our annual rate update, finance committee looks at, looks at that. Uh, you all just saw the solid waste, waste and trash contract renewal process play out. Uh, we've got a lot of big expensive water wastewater treatment projects coming down the line, we'll see all those coming. To you for appropriation approvals, expenditure approvals. Uh, water sewer line rehabilitation is an ongoing program. Meter replacements, our utilities folks would love to do more with meters that, uh. We can remotely turn off, we can turn off vibration by neighborhood, those type of things in terms of. Preparedness, uh, because we can shut off isolate systems remotely, disaster situations, very expensive, but something that's on there, you'll see a CFP coming up. Um, then we've got some lift stations. So stations are, if you don't know what those are, they. Sewer water goes downhill, gravity, if you hit a place where you've gotta go up, lift station lifts it up. Uh, so the types of things that go through a lift station, um, the process involved, they're very high maintenance, expensive, so always. Public safety and justice. Um, and here we have things like, uh, coffee with a cop or community conversations, she's been hosting. Um, Scott Moore, who's here with you in this very room a couple of weeks ago, uh, has this part of neighboring program that he. He also works on crime prevention through environmental design assessment, helping people understand how where lighting maybe makes more sense for security. Where not to put a bush, these kind of things, you know, these are above and beyond just patrol. And accident investigation. Uh, Raphael, Chief Geras initiated this focused traffic safety zone program, he talked to you about. Here a couple of weeks ago, the mental health co-responder program, he had software's presentation of that, I'll authorize that. Three or four weeks ago, of course, we just had a big long, great conversation about heat like safety. Parks, open space, trails, recreation. In your program based budget, these are actually separate. But for the purpose of this conversation, we just put them together because it can operate simply one department. Uh, things other than just day to day checking people in the rec center, selling green speeds, you know, these type of things. We've got the implementation of the two C ballot question. Heard a lot about that. Uh, long range master plan that Ross is scoping right now, uh, pushing out an RFP, uh, a little later this year. Playground and park redesigns. Quick plug, next Friday, there's a ribbon cutting for Joe Carnival and. One thirty and. Two thirty.
One, two.
That's why I'm looking at one.
You're so, I'm impressed you got that.
Next Friday, the twenty first. Uh, you should have a email in your. Um, just a big media project, uh, streetscape enhancements. You all know there's been a lot of open space while vegetation initiative, agriculture, they've worked. We're about to start a vegetation survey and some ecosystem restoration. So these again are outside the normal scope, these are, uh, different projects that are in this realm.
Trying to jump in, so.
You can hear sound that they are.
Yeah.
Uh, cultural services, uh, types of things you see here other than, uh, checking out books and these type of things here at the library. Got a lot of programs and interconnectivity work going on. Um, different house outdoor, activating different outdoor spaces. Uh, what they've done out here in front of the library is a fantastic space, always people sitting out there these days. The resilience sculpture, which is well underway in front of City Hall, you have a chance to check it out, it's pretty cool, the way it's coming together, I think. Uh, artists are doing a great job there, Ted Memorial, um, Adam's team just finished up the landscaping for that, now we're just waiting on the. The broad final cannibalism to mount to the holder. Um. Uh, revision of the public arts process, something that you saw, that's a big change, you know, public art is something people wanna do more of, streamlining that process. Uh, and then we're currently working through. The municipal amendment to the intergovernmental grid superior versus the library that you guys talked about, so about a year ago. New design, this is Rob and his team. Uh, you see a lot of Rob and his team, last week was the planning show, uh, that was cool to see that looking there. Uh, they've got conplan, strategic land use code revisions going on. There's development applications that are always seeming to come in the door, sort of reservation programs, and you heard a lot about legislative advice, I think it was your last meeting as well. That's one of those other categories. Economic prosperity is another one of your programs, uh, things that can fit up here might be the main street closure consideration for earlier this year. Uh, downtown vision plan, uh, code process updates like expedited D, commercial energy codes, and it's. Uh, and then just making all of these different business connections, uh, if you haven't heard about the business, business B. Uh, that's something that EC is working on with, with technology, uh, pretty cool gatherings with the business community. And then the last program we have is this bucket of other. And I think this one's kind of interesting to, to look at and talk about. Uh. Because it has things in here that don't live anywhere else, and these have been, a lot of conversations on these. This one?
Yeah.
Because this is the boringest one of all, this is where I live. Uh, but this is, uh, there's been actually a lot of different things we've been doing here. Uh, board and commission engagement has been a big effort over the last year and a half, I think we've made a lot of progress, a lot of work too, a lot of progress. Purple chambers update. Didn't you all agree on TVs last week?
Yeah.
Um, I do understand, just as I mentioned on that, except I know some of us all were cringing, uh, tones on our face. What I understand is like remotely, you look normal and good. In the room, it's illegal.
The thing looks down, it goes out. All the filters are, it gets better. Yeah.
You don't need to call the makeup just, yeah. Uh, agenda management system, this is something that hopefully is pretty seamless for you guys, but it's gonna be a big dramatic change for Meredith and the third team as far as. With records, access to these different packets, uh, it'll be a big change for staff as far as how they enter all their communications. Uh, what it is, it's a tool to manage all of. Uh, different things that are coming out. That's one's financing issue. Risk management, IT, we've got a pilot project with cybersecurity, it's another one. Doesn't get a lot of people's repair, look avoid, avoid. Thanksgiving, Thanksgiving to go when we're down for. That was not okay, library shut down, it's all. Center, how do you, how do you, you know, check things out, I'll take a P. So working on a lot of, you know, redundancies and. Now, the bucket of other. Uh, you've had a lot of conversations recently about affordable housing initiatives, uh, recovery and facility initiatives, different regional initiatives, transportation and so forth. And equity diversity. These don't really have anyone else to live other than other. So that's where they're at right now. And again, the point of this was just to kind of. You know, we're gonna start having a lot of budget conversations here, uh, and this is the way you had your work plan tied to budget, if you will, to certain program areas, just wanna give you a flavor of the different types of things that. Um. Now proposed framework. Um. We're, we're, we wanna talk about connecting your work plan items to what we've been playing around with different words like strategic initiatives, where we're at now is more like priority. Priorities, priority areas. This will maybe make, hopefully make more sense as we go. Forward. This. Is a, uh, graphic that comes originally from ICMA, International City Management Association, talks about roles. And I think it, what it says is. On the left, where you've got, yeah, I guess. So below the green and purple boxes, council responsibility and staff responsibility. Neighbors away. If you look at the bars towards the bottom, you can see purpose and vision, that's really the heavy lift for council. Far right, where you've got. But it's also saying that council needs to have some awareness on those day to day night. Set support on the, uh, the purpose and vision, and then everywhere in the middle, you start to see, uh, how, uh, we as a. Policy by staff work together to move this organization forward. Uh, this one is one of my favorite ones, different slides of this whole. Presentation, uh, this is Maslow's hierarchy of needs. On the right, you can see the one maybe you've seen before, physiological needs, safety, all the way up to self actualization. You can apply that same thinking to what we do as an organization. Um, at the bottom, where the foundations, some people might call it, uh, those core services I mentioned before. Uh, then there's version critical legislative changes or, uh, maybe some litigation, maybe some kind of a disaster. Uh. Community demand, these are things that the community is asking you to do, and go all the way up to aspirational things. And aspirational things are the really fun things to talk about. We'd really like to, to, uh, you heard, uh, cultural advisory board talk about their passion for holding arts. Got to be cool. Rab talk, I think golf or club out, that would be awesome, because you can use both of those, and. Are we hitting our core operations, our core services, before we start doing things like that? And as you talked, uh, much like before about the budget, this will, I think, start to become more real. Terms of numbers. Um, and this is just a graphic of, uh, when we kind of see this stuff coming together. Like you have your existing plans, uh, we see us to teach plans, we have an existing conplan, we're kind of changing it. Um, you have existing open space plans and a set of things, uh, current council work plan, um, and then, uh, so next week. Here's, you know, it's July sixteen, so July sixteen is the community survey. Uh, so council, the needs are really coming to you soon to hear what the community is saying, that survey work, we're actually proposing to do it every two years now rather than four, to get a better baseline on that. Uh, and then tying, you know, council priorities into this, and vice versa, these into council priorities, which then starts to inform strategic initiatives or priorities. Which then starts to drive product work plan, work plan, uh, budget process, uh, you know, when I have, when I have a clear vision for me what your priorities are. It's easier for me to talk to two departments, both have initiatives, departmental initiatives that are really important. But this part A needs support for part B, vice versa. And they both feel like, or find out your priorities. A fits better with your priorities, and I'm gonna say, A, we're gonna make happen, part B, you need to help. Part A, move this council priority forward. Just kind of balancing those departmental.
So when Jeff started on this, we do have a timeline, trying to think about how we align with these things. We just recently got a comprehensive plan update, as we go in this presentation, you'll see that we incorporated, so it would be early, thanks for hearing from the conference, and keep this consistent. You're at your work, first work that conversation right now, in July, get your residents to create results, and then you get another opportunity to dive in, hopefully refine what those priorities are in council. I think the going ahead is to move the budget for this conversation. For those who used to help inform that process. Uh, if we follow the process through, you have the opportunity to work through the work plan, finalize it, you took doc, or review comprehensive plan vision values, and do your budget adoption, and all of these things are happening, similar to kind of the. For our proposed approach, I'm willing to kind of compare and contrast, it's really not too different here for them. We're still doing the annual work plan, we're still driving by council priorities, and it's still gonna be used to set agenda and form step. What we're asking this year, in the past, it's been a base of strategic initiatives, projects. This year, we're looking for council to identify challenges or opportunities, what success looks like for each. And then staff can help plug in those tasks that they progress on those to be a factor of success.
And we really think priorities, not strategic issues. I think rather than challenges, we might be, I'm sorry, rather than problems, we might.
How do you, sorry, how do you see the difference between those few things that you just laid out? See, sorry, you said not. Go through the gaps, please.
Well, if, so, um, if you look through, this isn't. Unique to. Louisville. What we're talking about here, if you look at the city of Boulders, council work plan, if you look at the Boulder County Commissioners' work plan, uh, what else have they done, the law enforcement. Um, revealed, I think, um, they, they use some different words, I think three out of four of them use priorities, one of them uses strategic initiatives, um, I mean, I think it's. There's a lot of similarity between those, you know, it's, it's how you define things, it's my first, what is affordable housing, that's similar kind of question. But it's, it's not, it's, I think of it as, uh, not projects or tasks. But areas of focus or, I mean, I think priorities are, or these are, we, we want, and this will be the next slide to develop with that.
Okay.
We just said two, which two?
No, he, he went through a list, and he was like, not this, but that, and not that, but this, and think about, and so I was like, with your mind, what's the difference between those two things that you're?
Well, the other, the other one was problems or challenges. Just language.
Thanks Professor.
Well, I'm literally, sorry. I didn't even like, should we call them problems, should call them challenges, should call them strategic initiatives, or strategic priorities, it's just like. Language wise, what are we gonna prefer?
But it means the same thing in our S, is what we're saying.
Yeah.
So the only thing that I heard from that though, which I actually really like, is that it sounds like instead of us determining the tasks of council. We say, this is what we would like to see as end result, and staff knows their resources and capabilities, and can help figure out, instead of us figuring out when you get there, they. And I think that creates a much faster way to end up figuring out how we achieve and goal fulfillment.
Yeah, and I, I, I think you're spot on with that, and when you, or if you, when you look at the council work plan, you'll see this mix. Uh, and if you were to think back to last year, there was, uh, there was a conversation, a couple of them, I remember very distinctly, one of them was economic vitality. You all said, just before you got here, but I think you said, the rest of you said, economic vitality is really important. Staff brings, bring economic vitality projects back to us. Uh, you kind of had the same conversation with EDI, we had this conversation about, EDI is so important to us. How come it isn't on the work plan? And then, then, you know, you had other items on the work plan like, uh, land use code provisions, which is more of a project. So kind of that. Kind of what rehab or anything. Not having this mix of different pieces of work plan.
So taking a little bit of a jump ahead, since we're kind of, we're going ahead, presentation, I think that's awesome. My voice, it's awesome. So a couple of things we're looking at, your potential strategic priorities could be things like these value statements from the conference, and these are clearly still being edited. But for example, it could be, this is a welcoming, inclusive, and supportive community. Support safe established in the same neighborhoods. Values of parks, open spaces, to national areas, essentially, as a central community infrastructure, and I don't need to read every one of these to produce the value, but. I think there is value in aligning your strategic priorities with our. And so what does it look like?
I can't. All right. Uh, so here's a, what this might look like slide, uh, I'm gonna try to do it. Justice, and sample. But one of those eight, um, potential priority. Statements, if you will, conplan, presentation, about prioritizing environmental sustainability in the land. If that was a priority, you could help us by defining the challenge and the opportunity, and it might look something like, you wanna preserve natural resources like water, right, to help your planet, future generations. It might look something like, you want to preserve natural resources like water, why not help your planet, future generations? Say something different, but that's. Example, um, define success, what does that look like? Might look like progress being made on Louisville's climate action goal, producing energy-related greenhouse gas emissions. You can measure that, get, get targets, show where we're taking progress. Uh, and then underneath that, staff can come back to you and say, here's the step. We're at any twenty twenty four and twenty twenty five for implementation, phase one, if you will, internal de-organization. We're actually working on it right now. Uh, and here's also some steps towards implementation of the community de-organization. Here's some steps, and we're having those conversations that staff have also. Uh, and that, that one, you know, the first, the first implication, external is like projects. Uh, replacing HNC, uh, adding parking spaces, those kind of things. Second one, uh, you just saw recently, they, uh, were bringing pays, which is partners. Uh, something. Environment. Somebody, well, um, and they are helping, uh, our businesses be more sustainable. So through our bag tax and our, uh, those programs that, uh, are sustainability divisions running, we're not adding this additional operating to our business base, so they can operate in more sustainably.
So how would we get here? The identification of priorities is a lot of these. Our recommendation would be that we start with that challenge or the opportunity. We understand for each of you what success looks like. If we're needing this opportunity, if we're addressing this. Concern you have. This is where we'd like to give you homework, we'd like for all seven of you to provide this to us. And we'd like to bring it together and have a discussion where we really refine, redefine strategic priorities. We would propose giving you a template. Uh, we've given you examples, your packet can give you examples, give you a blank template. Where you can help with the priority area, what that challenger opportunity is, what successful is. And that, as council on return point out, it's really helpful for us to know what are our right actions we need to do as an organization, as a community to make progress. And then we'll also help you all tell your story. Someone asks, what have you accomplished at council? Who knows? With support from council, the next step we would propose is, we will send you, we'll send you templates tomorrow. July nine, you can ask for those individual templates in order for us to pull this together into the summary fashion committee to have the July twenty three meeting. This would really be a working session for council to take that opportunity to understand each other's priorities, replying them, and we find success. Then that would give cap staff a little bit of time to put some effort into what programs, projects, tasks, or what like, and which ones? And bring that back, it'll be for office thirteen, so you can see the whole picture, then do that check. We made that expectation, it's on track.
Yeah, one more component of this, uh, to share recall is, the council work plan as it is today, uh, is, is really a working document between council and clerk's office and city manager's office primarily. Departments still get it, they add things in, uh, that helps out with the work planning as well. It's not a public facing document, we're really reluctant to share with the public because if these things move around all the time, then if we're not careful, we have people showing up to a meeting and saying, new man's jet, you've got this item, where is it? Uh, so we don't want that kind of stuff to happen. Uh, but what we haven't been doing, it would be valuable, this sharing these stories with the community, the things, what your council priorities are. Types of things that you're asking your staff to work on, uh, and then the types of things that's, things that staff is working on, uh, in a way public to see and understand. Uh, I'd also like to get to a place where we also have visibility on all the internal staff initiatives. When we went through those program areas, we saw, uh, you know, whatever was one to fifteen or twenty-five percent of a program area might be council, uh, work plan items. A, a lot of it is internal staff initiatives to accomplish, um, various things. Uh, so having some visibility of what all these things are, and then have a recording for people to see. We're making progress on these things. We don't do that, we haven't done, at least to my knowledge, or since I've been here, we haven't done reporting back to council on how we're doing with the work, like it's kind of an angle type of station. I'd really like to be in a place where we're telling the story, we're making progress, we have accomplishments to celebrate. Uh, and if you, um, and if it helps. I have, I have some of those other, uh, work plans up on my computer, but like, if you look at the city of Boulder, uh, Lama, Redfield, Boulder County, uh, we can see they're all a little bit different, but I, I think that's stuff that we're just not doing. Work plan, if you work on that. And I think this is pretty subtle stuff, but I think it can be released.
So the one thing there is, looking at this slightly, like, we look at the challenge of the resident survey coming in on the sixteenth. Um, I actually like to go read that before I submit to the collective of conversation, or some suggestions. I'd like to get a read through, you know, maybe where the rest of the community is not just for the work. It's very deep, that, you know, would help me.
Is that the landing thing? If we did it, you know?
Yeah, that's a good question too, I was thinking through that. I would like to still try and turn things around so that you'd be able to have a conversation to refine priorities before you have a time to decide.
I think for the budget retreat could be great.
Before the budget retreat, um, having only one week is really challenging. So if, if potentially as council members, you knew what, you knew how this traffic, kind of knew what you thought they were. And then kind of quick turnaround after the July sixteen presentation to relieve that, give that back to us. It'd be type for council members.
Do you think there's a scenario where we have a presentation, community survey scheduled June, July sixteenth? Uh, do you think we'd be in a place where we could send a report out to council? That's what they have in the report.
We're getting the, yeah.
Maybe, maybe.
Yeah, it's been a happy, I assume.
Maybe we could even send it, zip it out, talk to you days before the package. Are you?
Top line.
I don't know if it's good or it's not.
It's just a rough interpretation. Really helpful, I think, at least from, from my perspective and understanding what we're hearing and the sound. Also, you know, like, that'll be, we have twenty people responding every week.
Yeah.
That must made a kind of balance, was also reading that. The other thing that for me, I, I remember for us, it would be really thoughtful, is not just seeing the composite, like a compilation of all our hidden or not, that like, you could pile up, but it's like, oh, this is top three and five. I'd actually be interested to read other, very thoughts, just in case it's like, oh, like I missed that one, that was a great idea. I look at my, where if it didn't make the top, you know, three, five, I might not know. And so I, again, rather than just giving us that, we can see all of them, the compiling is great. But I also would see the, the broad range of like.
That would be my intention, so everyone's responses and package in that compilation to help us build some discussion.
Yep. Essentially, for those of you who are, you know, definitely been around for a while, the way it's working across the fast is, staff has asked you for your list. And then assemble that, and then ship it out. Station, um, and you start to weight these things, um, with the votes and so forth in the past. So you will, same as in the past, see all those types of things. And, um, this, the way I look at this, this is something that, you know, um, can always be amended, you amended here in January. Uh, you know, as priorities may change or people may change, I think that's always your prerogative. Uh, but I think, uh, yeah, I mean, yes.
Something that I think is good about, what you said, it is different than the past, is the weighting of things, the evaluation. Uh, all happened to me. And it was a free for all. Mutual. Um, going into sort of organized status. But, but being able to look at things in advance that other folks do, but I think it's going to be a big step forward. And each of us can go back and say, and that, you check into that a little bit more. Need, I like that. I mean, I, it, it will move that. I'm all for that.
Is the expectation, if you want us to challenge success for all of the strategic initiatives, or the ones that are committed to most of us, or?
Ones that are most. I think in an ideal scenario, since it's a one year work plan, we have, we have five strategic priorities that we're focused on. So pick what works best.
Yeah, yeah. Sort of an example of the template with some stuff built in, and we'll send it out to you tomorrow.
Yeah, I saw it.
That was on the, it's in the package, you can press it in it. Yeah.
So that just, that's the expectation, nothing?
Yeah, that's just a sample two.
Yeah, I'm saying.
I think this.
They're, they're the bullets, yeah.
Um, one other thing that I guess I would add to this is, we're talking about. We're talking about what success looks like. And I think probably useful to think in both quantitative, qualitative, and certain areas. I, I think it's, you know, and some of them are going to be easier to figure out qualitatively. I mean, it's going to be pretty hard, if you have to talk to someone, it's going to be pretty hard to decide in numbers. Of course, the thousands, for them, it's harder than necessarily get around. We might, I mean, I don't know, maybe, maybe we'll be able to, but I think those are going to be a little harder. There may be some others that are going to be a bit easier, you know? If you're talking about a couple of, uh, we saw, so, of, uh, greenhouse gas emissions, you know, maybe there's, maybe there's some kind of numeric target, but I think having both of those in my. This one.
That's just on the six of the survey. Getting all of our input. And you know that it's something else. On the survey, I really know that it's, uh, a resident, that owns a rent, or a business owner, and do they own the business? Or do they own the building that this is in, or both? Uh, certainly will have that information in aggregates, and will have some ability to summarize the general homeowners responding to something, the general renters responding to something. There will be individualized spots, it's all. Okay. And what about the business? We did a resident survey, this was not a business.
Any comments? Questions? I think you. Actually, it's just a question. Yeah, go ahead.
So, help me to understand this part of the process. When I'm looking at some examples, you had, uh, let me find the page here. Page twenty-two packet. Current work in examples, one of them was comprehensive plan update, and it's a project. This was a point in my view of contention with the post-it notes last year. Some people said, I know that has to be done, I'm not going to use one of my six post-it notes to vote for that. So are we going to get a list ahead of time of what has to be done and will be done? So that we can focus our responses on different things?
You just hit the top two, like, they, they use a comparison, you have aspiration with between. May end where you let me keep your focus versus our incredible, always our.
Yeah, I guess I'm asking, are we going to get a list of those? Cause, cause last year, because it was a mix of strategic initiatives, projects, and tasks, it was kind of messy up there. Um, and yeah, are we going to get information on those core services or that, what is the color coding on our work plan? There's a section that's like, has to be done regardless.
Yeah, I think, and Jeff and I were starting, I think if that is something that you're interested in, we could certainly try and. Right, obviously, we're not going to stop the comprehensive plan, anybody's process, or be very surprised if that was in choice. So we will still be doing the comprehensive plan in twenty twenty five. And so if we can ask staff to do some work to help me, um, in those types of important things, we can do in twenty twenty five. I'm also at, Jeff had, maybe, Jeff maybe. Good responses yesterday. Um, I think when you think about your strategic priority for the city, you should consider what you are most passionate about, and that might cover a core service. And that might mean there's some more area of thoughts on, what is your biggest passion for the city? That you are hearing from residents, of course, being that they need to move forward.
Or the true most enthusiasm.
Okay, so it's not like, I felt like last year when we did this, you had, like, your finished note for comp plan, or comp plan might not happen. But this year, like, these, there's things that are going to happen regardless, we can rest assure of that. And we can focus on different initiatives or what.
You're trying to go to like, why, why waste time debating things that are going to happen, right?
Yeah, yeah, because we did that.
Yeah, so I think that's, well, we just like, kick that off the table, there's going to be things that you say, you have to do these things. We're going to vote seven oh, let's go to the ones where there's a little more conversation with faith.
And you should start, right, with that, with our, the values. That is the priorities, that priority, and you may, you may, you may conclude right then, that, I'm not I'm not jazzed up or enthusiastic about one of these. Uh, and not put anything in them. But you still, you only use that as a bright.
I think you're spot on with that. And, and what we, what we suggested is, those eight value statements from the comp plan might be, that might be a good list, pick three, four, five, six of them. Uh, there might be others, and with your conversation on those, those eight seem to be turning into maybe nine or ten. Um, and, and so, I, I, I think the focus more on which, like, what are those, to your point, right? What are those values, what are those priorities, priority areas? What I would suggest, like, say, as a starting point. And, you know, we have, on this example sheet, we have the, the comp plan update under unique quality play. It probably go under a number of different priorities. Um, but it's, what are your priorities, what do you really want to focus on to make, make a difference? Is it, is it, um, is it parks, open space, and natural areas, if that's the case, I think we should focus a little bit there, you know what I mean?
In the template, send those, it might be good to tell, so it's, say, of like, here's where we want you. The, because frankly, what's always been problematic in checking this, very, but what's always been problematic is that everybody is not, they're not using the same level of generality. They're, they're sort of, there's things that fall into all kinds of categories. They're trying, at least I get it, that you're trying to get us to focus analytically, put these things in a order that everybody else can compare to. And, I mean, right, is it part of the task here? So I think that might be, I, one of the things I want, I want to say, thank you. Is that it is really important for all of us to appreciate how many of each one of these things, you've already got a bunch of, who events, I have a joke with Jeff about this thing. We have sometimes councils, sometimes the community has a, uh, a problem with like object turns. Like we don't, you know, uh, little kids looking, seeing an object, and seeing behind a screen, and then. Like we don't, you know, uh, little kids looking, seeing an object and seeing it behind a screen and then. Um, like it comes out the other side and it's like, oh, there's another one instead of, no, it just traveled behind the screen. And there is stuff that when we don't see it is actually happening. And it's taking up in many ways, the majority of city halls. Because a lot of it is for those. Which are absolutely essential then. Yeah, and that's what's good. I mean, I really like, I really like that breakdown because it'll show that.
I think I could almost side with your second mayor to what a couple of saying, so. Uh, other things that we need to be doing. Uh, we have been working with all departments and asking them for all their work plans, um, to the, to the point the mayor's making, like, you know, I. Said earlier, I think, or like invisibility on certain things. And so we're headed in that direction. I think our hesitation is how far we'll be on that in the next month, basically. Uh, but I think we can take what you're saying. I hear what you're saying.
Thank you. I think also remember, you know, I've summarized it much more eloquently than I was able to. Thank you.
And it's not a contract exercise either. I think that's what they, you know, it's simple development. I think that's one of the benefits of doing, with about. Doing it is that, you know, if. Come up with. Feeling long way or long trips, so it does give something. I think that is.
Yeah, um, curious, one of the things that always is difficult for me in the work plan process is kind of understanding. The balance between, you know, staff time, council time, uh. Quantity of meetings, the topic will have to be addressed. Yeah, length, length of time for the project, you can take these kind of things, it's like. So we're looking at a priority, you know, whatever it is, and one redo every sidewalk in Losso. And it's like, okay, well, that wouldn't necessarily take a lot of council time. It would take a huge amount of money. That's what I didn't, that, that's a lot of money. And that's a, a lot of staff time, but maybe not to council time. So you're like, oh, that one's easy. Cool, let's do that one, because that one won't take much time when we're looking at our work. Plan, um, but if we pick a bunch of things that are very expensive, that's second one for the budget. You think a bunch of things that are gonna occupy a lot of staff time, that's not gonna be functional, right? You'll accomplish it. If we pick a bunch of things that are gonna take four, five, six meetings in council and they're all contentious, we're not gonna get it worked on, like, as far as meeting go, right? So do you have an idea of how you're planning on presenting those constraints for us? When we're thinking about, maybe this is like third or fourth step in the process, or if you're like, okay, so. These are your top five initiatives or your top five priorities, the things you really want us to work on. Every one of these is expensive or every one of these takes a lot of council, every one of these is really staff heavy, um. And, and what are our limitations there? Cause I think it's always just sort of after it's like. Can you do all that? Like, it's gonna be hard. We may not be able to accomplish all those things, like. Give it a try. It's really, and it's hard to know, like, no, that's too much. You'll have to cut one of those things. And those hard choices for us of, no, you cannot do A and B, you have to do A or B. But we don't often get that direct of a, uh, input back from staff of saying. It's easier with budget because it's dollars and cents, but it's like, you cannot afford. The staff time it's gonna take to do projects A and B. So you guys as a council are gonna decide who want A or B this year. That's just how it is, right? And so I don't know, I didn't see that anywhere in this part of the process, but do you guys have a sense for how you communicate? Yeah, well, I'll, sure you have thoughts. I think, uh, in initially, but yes. Uh, I, I think initially, uh, really if we understand that it's. All of three or four priority areas, right? Same multi-ball of transportation. Let's just stick with that. That's the number one priority. Then we know that's your number one priority, that's most important, if the council wants to make a difference on twenty twenty five. We will steer our staff toward to try to fit better with it. Right now, I don't have that, so it's hard to say like. We need to take over engineers off of the stormwater project. Because the multi-ball of transportation, he must have had a little role. So I think the prioritization will help us help me with that kind of internal stuff.
That's a good example though, because to me, that's one where I would like to know if we're taking something great or something like stormwater and breaky bikes. I'm gonna go with the priority of our stormwater systems and say, let's figure out how we balance this out. Because something might have a core crucial emergent need for the community versus a like.
Yeah, and, and I should, you know, to your point, like, yeah, absolutely. If there's an emergency, if we have. A monetary issue somewhere, like. Uh, if we wanted to, uh, we wanna take existing stormwater channel. Uh, and, uh, make it more like a, what do they call those, uh? Like a breeding channel, it's like bio channel where there's different plants that sort of, that filters the water, so really cool stuff. But maybe that's not. That's important. Um, then I think, uh. Another, another thing I'd ask you to talk about is portable housing. Like portable housing has been something we talk a lot about. If you're saying, you say portable housing is a priority. What, what are we doing about that? There's no money in our budget. We don't have a portable housing first. Uh, we have a couple of people. Tank in some meetings. Um, that, that kind of statement like allows you to change direction of those operations. But, so, so. No, I just say, well, that's, so another part of this whole conversation is that we are again, for me and Chris and Deb, this is. This is very new, uh, compared to, it's impressive. It's different from the past. Um, because for years, we do the budget and then after the budget. Which ends around like November, we do the work plan, say in January. And we already have a budget in place when doing the work plans, we like talk about some things that are important to us. But the budget is the budget and so there's not necessarily a great connection with the things we wanna do and the money we have to do those things. And so, um, you know, this idea of switching order and saying, let's start our work plan and talk about our, our key priorities. And then we'll have a budget plan and the budget might reflect better the priorities we just worked on. Um, and so I think that was the example I gave on portable housing is, you know, we set a budget, god, portable housing is really important. It's like, cool, well, we can look into some other things, people, but like, there's not really a money conversation, because you don't have a budget for the last. Or as you say, hey, portable housing is really important to us, well, maybe we need to budget X amount of dollars this year towards portable housing or FTE or something. Um, to accomplish that thing. So just, I think that. We're right now, we're talking about a work plan and how to devise a really good work plan that's really clear and helps us move forward. But the way it ties in eventually to the budget is, is super important. Um, and so that's, that's always just kind of thinking about it again is like, oh. Multi, multi-modal is super important. It's a high priority for this this year. Like, then we get the budget conversation, but the kind of priorities like. Okay, what we putting, what money we putting? And then we generally do that with like de-conversation, some of the things where like, we're putting our money where our mouth is and doing that work. Um, so I'm, I'm looking forward to this process being different. And I don't know what it'll yield necessarily, but this first part of getting our, getting our. Priorities out there and being able to agree on something and that so know that generally like we have majority that agrees. These are some of our major priorities and then we can get behind that with, uh, the decisions you made later.
And maybe to the passing, um, now just the, the. That we were already starting to discuss, but now we have that. The mastermind place by. So. Where instead of putting the priorities.
That fits into that other category. Of injection, those things that, oh, that's what we need to do now.
If I may, I think. Right, we talk about how we build this. There are number phases. The one of these spaces is definitely back to you as a council would say. Here's what you told us your priorities. Here's what you hope to successful. Here's what we believe and reasonably do in twenty twenty five. And here may be some thought considerations.
Yeah, I mean. In the end, one of the things that. I heard at a, oh, yeah, Larry Donner said that I thought. He, he, he is very interested in the irregular cycle. Timeframes between things that we want to do. Um, and he said it very clearly. Private citizen can say it like that, but I mean, there are a lot of things we wanna do. There's limitations, but there's also, I mean, there's, there are some things that are literally gonna come. And bump each other. And those are gonna be things that have to have works. But, um, I, I'm looking forward to this process. I didn't understand it when you first. You wrapped it, you were just talking about what that last week. Um, but I, I think what it sounds like is that it's, it's trying to align a whole variety of. And I admirably, we will see how that, we'll see if we can. In that sort of way. Um, why don't we take public comment, we got anybody?
Can you stand up closer here so we can hear?
Just.
You're, you're fine right there. Just speak, speak loudly.
Um, Sherry Summer, so I am interested in the idea of. Uh, becomes incorporated in this. Um, I really like, oh, first of all, I wanna say, I think since we. Like, this is something huge that will be in process. And I just think, I think it's so much more efficient, it's so much more thoughtful. It's sometimes a good efficiency, but it's not very thoughtful. But this is good. You're, it's gonna be all synced up together. And I just think you're, you know, people will be happier. It's gonna be so much better. So good talking. Um, and I, but I ask about community in the end gets. So I think the learning was problems, challenges, and I really love it. It's, it's opportunities and I think we are doing so, well, not me, you are doing so many things. Like the activities, people love the activities. So there's some things that we are already doing really well. It's not amusing, but there's still needs to be effort to continue to do that. And maybe there are things that we may, it's, you know, not as a day of return. So I'm just kind of interested in how that's been reassessed. And I guess, you know, we're. I guess the feedback. Um, so that's one point, just saying like we are, you are doing many. The other thing, and I don't know, I've talked to people about this in the community and they're like, ah, very unrealistic. I mean. You know, ideally, everything, not having tweets for a lot of the pressure. And I think there's openings of the work of this, where it's more like people aren't coordinated. So it isn't like. You know, the, you know, the office meeting or yours to get things done. Um. Yeah, I, I think that we. Like, I, I think that this is what passed over.
Anybody else online? All right, why don't we take it back? Um, I had a couple of things. One, I'm, I'm looking back since you pulled up Maslow's hierarchy of. Useful. I, I wanna make one observation that, um, it's, it is great. To be focused and. I think this as aspiration to community. I think that is, that's wonderful. Um, and there are things, you know, during the year that. Followed into the urgent critical. I would say that there are actually things right now that follow, follow into the core services operations. That are in need of attention. And safety needs, I'm noticing even personal security, employment resources, health and property. And it's, it's the logical needs sheltered. Um, issues around fire, are they preparedness? I think people preparedness, particularly people, they go back as. Fundamentally, public safety, set of issues between communities, achievements involved in some of the discussions that are now in the areas. Um, because it's so essential. It's, that's making people feel comfortable. And knowing, you know, if there's a disaster, it doesn't have to be a fire. Erament or something else. Um, those things are really, so I don't know where they all fit. Some of the priority can, you know, might be community. Uh, I mean, there may be different ways of, of conceiving that, but I think preparedness is very much a bottom. Fundamental foundation set of issues. For particularly for anybody with kids. You know, we want people to be very, we'd love for people to be able to say, I hope they will be saying on their survey. We are very, feel very safe. I will be very interested in this type of thing as I would expect, but the asking. It's always really hot. Be interesting to see if it changes at all. You know, since the. That's one thing, um. Uh, I, yeah. At least that's my recommendation. Survey address the issue of public safety generally.
Yeah. Not, it's, it's safety in general.
Safety in general. Like the everyday piece of pride, not so much. Safety against, uh, and that's disasters or anywhere threat.
Right, so people have to, we'll see what response. If it's the same as always, then great, right? Um, but you're right, it's not as random.
So, yeah, we didn't ask you to prepare for the next, the communities, but we just didn't ask that question, right? So we didn't, we won't have.
I think that's. Well, I, we, we talked about what's gonna be on that list of priorities. And I'm assuming, you know, came across the issue. And there were others. Did you forget that one? There's others that are presumably.
Yeah, from your comp plan values, yeah, conversation that's still evolving. This was put together like day before, day of that council meeting. Um, so there was a lot of really good ads in your conversation.
Right, the template is going to incorporate.
And my intention was. Do you have this too, this is.
Well, I mean, you should just keep up. Right, that's gonna be in the side. I mean, so we're ready to want forward, so. But that takes. It's not quite done, that's fine. There's more to be done, but I think adding all of this.
It will check with planning and see how they come along if we have some updates from the lawyers that we.
I'm for the less expensive.
Yeah, I mean, I'm saying, just, let me say it a different way. It should be on, yeah, yeah, decided. And even if, but, but we understand change a little.
Product, just something that we can re-remember from that.
Other comments, questions? I, I guess I have a question. This is two thousand twenty five. I I guess I have a question. This is two thousand and twenty five, I get it. Uh. What about two thousand and twenty?
I mean, almost over.
Well, no, 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 no.
Please don't say.
Get started.
Yeah.
We finally hit summer.
I mean, to the extent, um, and 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 that threw me a little bit early, just. I I think it's great that we're getting started originally. So. It's important for us to be talking in two thousand and twenty five, but. Uh, we are. Yeah, you know, five months. Plus through two thousand and twenty four, we've got a lot of priorities. Um, that are hanging out there in. In, um. This is beyond scope. Um, I I understand it, but I I do. You know, I don't want to get too too much further in here about. Our choices of community, our choices. About which of these. Pieces of our current, you know, messy. Work plan.
Coming together pretty quick here. And I think if you're thinking like. Wait, what's left of twenty four and twenty five? Work plan, I think that's fine.
I mean, we have the train. There are there are people who are. Relying on what we included in the plan. That might. Want to be. You know, through what happened.
Still, back to your agenda, it's about priorities. This conversation doesn't change.
Yeah, I would see this changing necessarily, unless you want to change your priorities. Think of things you have in your work plan, things that you're forward to. It may just look a little bit different in terms of other type. So I think that's.
Well, it's it's an open question, though. I guess maybe. Maybe I'm not. Same, right? As you look at twenty four. The question I have. Are there things wrong with this? Would you anticipate our goal to be difficult if not to be possible? To accomplish. By year.
We would move for kind of a check in. And checking this.
We we need to make decisions. I think. We need to make, I just don't want to come down to the last. So two four and say, oh.
Can I ask a question to preparation? For my bad example that hopefully you all know is not a real idea. Replacing all the sidewalks in Lucille. So okay, that was on our twenty twenty four work plan. And we haven't done anything towards it. It's the most important thing. We all agree. And so, gosh, that's going to have to be a big part of our twenty twenty five work plan. Because we didn't get to it at all. Is that kind of, is that enough of a?
Yeah.
Asinine example that we're not confused about what we're doing.
No, that's a good. Okay, so so. It's a good asinine.
So that, I mean, that might, I I think that makes sense to me, like, when we're trying to think about our workload. Or what we have capacity for in twenty twenty five. If we're noticing that our twenty twenty four work plan. Could basically be our twenty five work plan. That would be the exaggeration, right? But like, wow, we didn't get anything done. We're going to have to put all of that to twenty twenty five. It would be very ridiculous. To put pile on top of stuff that hasn't been completed yet. So you want to be really thoughtful. I think what I'm what I'm hearing is just want to be. Thoughtful that those carryover projects aren't being considered when we're thinking about bandwidth and money and. Well, I mean, if they've been, if they've been budgeted, they should have the money, but. But overruns is that some staff time, council time, budget, and what? What's on, and it's still needs to be considered.
Is it, is it wrong? Thank you. It's also that, not that we want to carry it over, but if the sidewalk project really was expected to. This year, the residents were expecting that sidewalk, or it needs to be started this year, that we made sure that with the six months still left in the year, in fact, the year. Then that moves to the priority that staff understands that as a council and as a community like that. The party versus just what we will. I think that's also. Kind of what you're in.
I was a little nervous about us getting into like. A really big conversation about our twenty twenty four work plan, like. It's there. It's like, I think, and the point like, we have it. It's it's happening. It's going. Um. But I think it would be, to your point, so kind of important to. Again, to the mayor's point as well, just like if if something isn't isn't getting done, that's important now. But I would, I'd just be a little, a little concerned if we do too. Deep of a dive into last year's work plan. You mean this year? This year, so like the work we did last year, create this year's work plan. We go back and then again, I think we already like looked at it again in January, February. Um, I think it was after, didn't wait till.
I was I was intent, so.
Okay, anyways, we already looked at it again one extra time, so I think. Yeah, so.
Yeah, low and light, like progress thing.
Yeah. Exactly.
Yes, I I think here's, here's what I, I, to your, to your point. If we said we want to have all. Of the. Sidewalks. This year, that was our work. And. Maybe as, let's not say we haven't started, say they've started. But until already. There's no way we're going to get past. That's not going to stop. I mean, we're not going to stop that. We we might include it on twenty five. Um, but it would be probably good to know that. It would also be good to know that. Well, by the way, if we want to continue doing that, even though. We're we sort of hope to get it all done. We really need to put. This program, I think, capital expenditure. Not the way to think about this, but if just. To do it as an abstract matter. There, it may cloud out some things. And what I hope won't happen in this process is that we just assume we are going to get all the stuff. Because I think that's, you know, what I've heard from you. Over time, even this year, it is, some stuff is taking longer, another stuff taking more bandwidth. It's going to be hard to complete everything. I don't shy away from saying. Okay, well, this has been the twenty twenty four work plan. But it's not. Going to get done. And, you know, maybe we say. We don't want to continue with. Or maybe we say we do want to put that in. Another. I. I think those conversations necessarily blend a little bit. I don't, I I agree with. With Mayor Portman, but I don't want to. I don't want to rehash. Two thousand and twenty four. I just want to know where it's at. Does that make sense?
Say that red light, right? Well, you know, you've had those points that go. Green lights completed, yellow is progressing and red hadn't started or fine. It's good, sort of. Yeah, we did all the time.
Yeah, and 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 we folder, folder has a really cool. Uh, dashboard that has that. And I think. That's one of the things that would be really. Community. See. Here's the work plan. Remember the work plan? Remember these products. Here's where each of them is. Here's what the, here's. Problems, here's the solution, the projects. So forth. It is free, that that's the word, yeah.
But and then also like. Along those lines, transparency, I think there's a lot of confusion. I'd be happy if the budget, I thought it's spending all this money, it's like, it's already earmarked. To repay. Like, and that got lost. Conversation.
Yeah.
I mean, I think some. I think that's just one example of this.
All right.
I've got a question.
Yeah.
How specific do you want us to be? In our priority? We could say economic vitality, or we could say. Point of concern, but how much do you want us to bring back then?
I I would say go with what you're comfortable with. I would start with those eight-ish value statements with the conflict. Um, and if you feel like, um. You know, something needs to be refined on it or or added or clarified on a particular statement, then feel free to do it. Then we're going to work through this inner process with you and you all think a little bit differently and. We'll have to uh work and and bring all this together.
And the more you can tell us. What you're trying to address and what success looks like, the better we can work. If it's a general housing, like policies that. They, it's the same.
Maybe one suggestion. Is. You know, as we're doing, it's men, right? It's in your way of doing it. You guys propose it. Ball. Yeah, I'm going to get to the house for you, bro. Because what we're shooting towards. Everybody thinks in different levels of general. I mean, I think trying to figure out. What that looks like will be, will be interesting to see where everybody comes in. But they can come with that.
Okay, I might run some initiative process by and say, oh, too general, too specific, not good enough.
Yes. Or call other comments.
Do we have one we're planning to do about timeline to think about? So if I have some time tomorrow to do that. I would like to give these words to the timelines.
We appreciate all the work that's gone. I know this is a huge, it's been a huge. And I'm fully appreciative. I've seen that on your board. All that stuff. Um, that you erased right before you went. You got vacation, I think. But. Anyway.
Hope I did my clip on that, um, just to build a little bit more on that. I'd like to thank all of our directors and leadership team for their help. They've been a part of this as well. They've been helping us. Kind of troubleshoot this and uh. And it helps understand what. Things we can do with you to help them be more successful and disruptive as well. So thanks to all.
And one thing I didn't ask for is certain.
Sure, well, yeah, if there's any more to add, you know. Put them on the slide.
I see. I have a question related to that, because we had talked about when we start with the budget, the all of the the proposed requests from some different parts, some of the big reports and residents and things. Is that becoming to us soon, even if it's not just to figure out the money piece for capital expenditures, but to help us all also get an idea of what maybe we are looking at? Kind of indicator to where the community is.
Is that good? Yeah, that's a pleasure. Retreat July twenty fourth. So there's, it's not a coincidence that we're talking about bringing this back to you July twenty third, and then the budget retreats next afternoon. It was two. You'll get that package, um. You get that package. No later than Thursday the eighteenth, so that's Sunday time. You get a lot of materials there. And the budget retreat is a first conversation. We're not, we're not bringing it for adoption. There's a lot of policy, level of servicing we want to talk through with you. Uh, there's a lot of things to talk about. It's going to be a big picture we're going to paint as far as. The the needs, wants, and wishes that that our teams see as well as the board's provisions and then what things might be missing from your perspective. Um, so then we've got as many as four other uh special meeting workshops to talk about the budget detail, how much you need. Um, and then, you know, if we need to adjust the timing of the work plan to make all this 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 fit together, we can figure that. Timeline we showed you was kind of targets and we're thinking makes sense. We have more time, just like everything else. We never expected to make the same, but so you're right.
I was just thinking that is for me, what really makes a point of figuring out what is aspirational to this to the community. Is when we see people saying like, yeah, we'd love to have all of this. These things happen. And we'd like to be performing arts center or whatever it is, right, to be in that aspirational area. Um, I think we hear a lot about what the demand or about the urgentness, that the aspirational piece is going to come from that, so.
Yeah, I think not that that. I mean, that's. And this is like the counter of our. Issue before, either you're not going to give up your chip. If you don't bring, I mean, you're not going to. Uh, it's not. It's not a.
Something like, I'm going to leave this short, because until I know what the community is asking for as aspirational, before I put anything down with this. Like, I want to make sure that I'm listening to what.
You mind, you mind just in terms of uh. Getting your wheels turned, if I can think back to the joint meetings you had with the various board commissions, Rab. And Cap and so forth, P Lab, Los Alamos. Things all that have to buy you doors. Uh, they had a lot of aspirational links above houses and plenty of yards and so forth. Um, and then, um, I I can, I can tell you that what what I've seen so far with the budget requests, um. Both in terms of staffing projects as well as operations and it's here's, there's a lot of. Forward service kind of things, a lot of deferred man. And it's a lot of things for asset management, what people need to take care of, um, that you're going to see in this as well. That's 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 part of the story too.
Good, um, but is there, oh, you have something? Oh, sorry, you're not, oh, this, so do you have anything to keep, um. Mind of is that. We're all going to come with sort of our ideas, but we're all going to get to see that citizen survey. And we're all going to care about what the citizen said. It's almost like. We're all bringing our ideas and the survey is wanting to bring public's ideas to that meeting. If what you did was wait to get that and then reverse data to us, well, then, you know, gee, what was? We can do too. So what you're going to do is take their, what they're looking for and bring that to council, but we're going to be, we're all going to do that. Hopefully, we're all going to take what, you know, what is in that survey and it's going to inform all of us, I would, I would hope. Even what what is clearly the priority for residents and things like that. So I think it's kind of, my my hope is it's 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 a both hand, it's like. You can have your own thoughts about what you think of priorities and then we'll, and then we'll also add those.
Yeah, I I actually think my personal thoughts are part of that survey, that they, rather than bringing. I what I bring to council is what I'm listening to and hearing from the community. That I engage in all the time. That's why I was interested to see that the city as a whole versus a lot of like focus in my. Residents that I talk to, because that's actually what. Uh, helps for me to guide what I think of as priorities, so the council is based on what I do here from our activity all the time. This is just the bigger picture for me. And then the aspirational piece is, I mean, we hear some of it, but this helps me maybe like engage. Where are big budget dollars? Like, what are some big projects, you know, um. You know, underpasses and adding multiple transportation on the other side of the highway, forty two, things like that was a big. Like aspirational thing, uh, I've heard a little bit about it, but it's one of the things you're worried that you're giving out.
True.
So that's, that's kind of what I was working.
And you may find that some. So comments earlier about defining things, you may find that some people think can ask about aspirational projects. And vice versa.
Are there? Other comments or thoughts that we can just have? For here, I appreciate your interest, man. You have to, you have to knock, so if I know.
You've just been given a free pass. This is the time.
This is. There are not a bunch of yes people, I'll show you that. And they're all smiling, so.
All right, um. Permission to turn. A sector of all in favor. Thank you all.